Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
We'd like to welcome you all to this public hearing held June 9th, 2025, at 80 South Superior in the Cambridge City Hall. It's a public hearing concerning Robert and Deanna McConnell's special use permit. Going to have the clerk read the notice of public hearing as advertised in the advertising news reporter in the city's legal newspaper.
Are you going to go through this paper? You want me to do that first?
Yeah, I'll read our advertisement for it.
Okay. Okay. Legal notice is hereby given that the City of Cambridge City Council will hold a public hearing on the 9th day of June 2025 at 7:00 PM at Cambridge City Hall, 80 South Superior Street, Cambridge, Idaho. The purpose of this hearing will be to receive comment on the following matter: Robert and Deanna McConnell's special use request. The applicant is requesting a special use permit to allow for a dwelling to be placed on a parcel greater than one acre but less than 20 acres on property located off of Highway 71 west of Cambridge within the Cambridge City area of impact. RP 14 N 03 W 036200. All interested persons are invited to attend the hearing and comment or submit a written comment prior to or at the hearing. Any person needing special accommodation to participate in the notice meeting should contact the City of Cambridge seven days prior to the meeting at 208-257-3318. Published in the Record Report on May 21st, 2025 and June 4th, 2025.
Okay, so what you're saying, you want me to read this quasi?
Well, there was just the introduction, like what the attorneys had us do before and what's persuasive.
Okay. I'll read it. Introduction. I'm the mayor, Mark Bogland. City Clerk Sandra McKee, Public Works Superintendent Corey Morgan, and the council members, as you can see, their nameplates out there. The nature of this issue, the applicant is seeking approval for a special use permit to allow for a dwelling to be placed on a parcel greater than one acre but less than 20 acres on the property located off Highway 71 west of Cambridge within the Cambridge City area of impact. RP 14 N 03 and then west 036200. Application must first be considered by the city with a recommendation to the county. Jurisdiction to approve or deny the request lies within the county. Cambridge City Code 1-10-6A excluding building permits, all permits required for planning and zoning subdivisions, variances, conditional uses, and any other matters covered by the Land Use Planning Act of 1975. Within the Cambridge City area of impact shall first be submitted to the City of Cambridge for such action as the mayor and council may deem appropriate. After final action by the city and upon the recommendation of the Board of County Commissioners by the city, the board shall approve, disapprove, or amend for further consideration any requests for action. The Board of County Commissioners shall act upon any recommendation within 45 days of a recommendation being forwarded. The decision of the Washington County Commissioner shall be based upon regulations and ordinances negotiated between the city and the board and adopted by the board. B, until such time as the City of Cambridge and Washington County adopt different regulations as to zoning subdivisions and building requirements, the Washington County ordinances in effect at that time shall be controlling within the city area of impact. The City Comp Plan, Section 5.2, Development Projects in Agriculture Area should incorporate strategies for preserving agricultural use. 5.8 or Goal 3 ensure that the City of Cambridge has sufficient available land within the city and its area of impact to accommodate projected city growth. Do we need to know, do I need to read the outline steps?
Yeah, just those three things.
Okay, outline the steps from before. They completed the application with the county, notice published in the newspaper, notice sent to property owners and other agencies via mail, notice was posted on the property, information from other agencies in Washington County. Okay, we'll proceed into the presentation portion of our hearing. Robert, any questions? Oh, sorry. This is what I was going to do better this time. Does any council member or the mayor myself have a conflict of interest or have had ex parte communication concerning this property? Take that as a no. Am I correct? Okay, no one has. Okay, Robert, we'll turn the time over to you.
I'll hand these out. These are just a statement and a matter of parcel land in the back of the.
Thank you.
So I'm Robert McConnell. My wife, Deanna McConnell, couldn't make it here tonight. So we are requesting a building permit for that property at 2925 Highway 71. It is more than an acre and less than 20. The legal description shows it's 10.1 acres. The upper portion of it looks like it has about four acres that's flat and the rest of it's marshy trees and the drainage down into Cool Creek on the backside of it. So we're requesting a building permit for a single dwelling home. It's our desire to build a three-bath, two-bedroom home. It will have a septic on the facility and drill a well. We're asking for the special use permit for this dwelling because it's not currently zoned for a building permit, from what I understand. We'll keep the property harmonious in accordance with the general objectives and the specific comprehension plan. We feel it'll add value to the community, keeping the property updated and upkept and clean. Our plans to build will not be hazardous or disturbing in any way to the future, the neighbors, or the communities. The property will be adequately served for all public facilities such as power, waters, or trash. The permit we are requesting will not create an excessive additional requirement or public costs or services to the city or community. It will be maintained with a new septic and well, like I said, and be maintained properly. The building permit we are requesting is for a dwelling, and some of this is redundant. I just kind of went off what the county had and they wanted us to answer, so. The building permit we are requesting for a dwelling will not involve excessive traffic noise, smoke, fumes, or odors. Construction of the dwelling will be done only during business hours, not to disturb or disrupt the neighbors or the community. We will have a proper vehicular approach into the property that will not interfere with its surrounding area and will comply with all setbacks, obviously with highway. The property will not result in any destruction, loss, or damage of the natural scenic or historic features or major importances. It is our desire to only improve this property and add to its beauty. And there's, you can kind of see on the next picture, this is kind of a overview, so the center, or best I can tell, it's about four acres that it's in the center. It's flat and usable. That's where we're going to let the house if it's approved. About in the middle of that with the driveway coming down, back down into it, we'll do a entrance off the highway so truck and trailer can get pulled in or whatnot without interfering with the highway. And that's my spiel.
If you could wait there just for a second. Do any of the council have any questions?
Okay. How far is the house going to be from the Highway 71?
About 200 feet off the road.
Okay. Any other questions?
My memory is telling me years and years ago, there used to be a house there.
One of the neighbors I talked to said that he moved here in 85, and he said there was a house that was pretty dilapidated in 85 that was there back in the trees.
I read a guy that lived there was Reed. Reed something.
An old cowboy named Roberts.
What?
An old cowboy named Roberts. His last name is Roberts.
Okay. Oh, Mead Roberts.
Mead Roberts.
Mead Roberts, okay, yes. He lived there. His house was pretty dilapidated, and then he died, and I think the house just kind of went to pieces after that.
Yeah, we couldn't find any signs of a foundation or anything back in there, but there's some debris and stuff, so I knew somebody had, someone had been there at one time.
That was about where your camera spot was.
Okay.
Nice. Okay, any more questions? Okay. Could we have the county staff report?
Just to let the council know that we have no representatives from the county here tonight. The county has a lot of land use issues going on and the office isn't staffed, you might say, right now. So when I called to ask, they asked me if I would read their report into record, so I'll do that. Robert and Deanna McConnell, special use. Hearing date, June 9th, 2025. Address, 2625, and we need to change that to 2925. Let's have a copy of the one before we change the address. Highway 71, Cambridge, Idaho, 83610. Parcel number, RP 14 N 03 W 036200. Legal description, 10.1 acre, southeast, southwest, south, 3T14R3. Applicant, Robert and Deanna McConnell, 1933 Country Club Drive, number 281, Council, Idaho, 83612. Summary of the proposal. The applicant is requesting a special use permit to allow for a dwelling to be placed on a parcel greater than one acre but less than 20 acres on property located off of Mill Road, northeast of Cambridge, within the Cambridge area of city impact. The property is in an area zoned A1 agriculture.
That has mistakes also.
This is their report. Do you want me, do you want to note the mistake?
It's not located off Mill Road. It's up where I live. It's not northeast of Cambridge.
Oh, it said Mill Road?
No, no, that's not where it is.
No, it's on.
It's on 71.
I read, I looked at that and I thought, well, Mill Road's up here. This is up this way.
This report is about the right of this property block.
Yeah.
Where Highway 71 begins.
Well, and I don't know if I have the liberty to do this or not, but I don't know if this will affect it, but there's a moratorium in place with Washington County on all A1 property right now. Since this is a special use, I don't know how that affects it, just to let you know. Today, the commissioners amended their motion so it doesn't include A2, and it's for 182 days. So anyway, this is considered A1 property, I believe, and so I don't know when we get it to them, how things are going to proceed. Applicable ordinance. Washington County Ordinance 541G lists lots larger than one acre but smaller than 20 acres as a special use in A1 agricultural zone. Washington County Code, Section 5, Chapter 9 outlines the procedure to be followed before a special use permit may be granted. Washington County Code 592 outlines the general standards applicable to special uses. Idaho Statute 676512, Special Use Permits, Conditions, and Procedures. Recommended findings of fact. After review of the application and file in this case, the planning and zoning staff recommends the commission adopt the following findings of fact. Site characteristics: Property size, 10.1 acres. Existing structures: None. Existing vegetation: Pasture and trees. Soil information: The soil is classified by the National Soil Conservation Services being 52.6% chopé silty clay loam, 0% to 3% slopes, prime farmland if irrigated, and 47.4% chopé loam, 0% to 3% slopes, prime farmland if irrigated. Slope, slight to no slope. Irrigation: No irrigation available. Access: Access is State Highway 71. Vicinity characteristics: Gravel pits. There are no known gravel pits in the vicinity. CAFOs: Noah Angus Ranch CAFO is within a half a mile of the subject property. Existing homes in the area: There are several home sites in the vicinity. Average lot size: Lot size in the area range from one acre to approximately 278 acres. Platted subdivisions: Mountain View Estate subdivision is approximately a half mile from the subject property. Encades height subdivision and reese subdivision are approximately one mile from the subject property. Comprehensive plan designation: Agricultural. Current land use: Assessor's Office classifies this property as market value. Current zoning: Agricultural 1A. Surrounding land use: Residential, commercial, and agricultural. Area of city impact: The subject property is located within the Cambridge area of city impact. Areas of concern: The subject property is not in the FEMA-mapped floodplain. The following agencies provide services to the subject property. Emergency Services: Cambridge Ambulance. Police Services: Washington County Sheriff. Fire District: Cambridge Fire District. Highway District: Washington County Road and Bridge. School District: Cambridge School District. Utilities: Idaho Power. Water and Septic: Southwest District Health. Procedural history: On April 23rd, 2025, the application for a special use permit was received at the planning and zoning office. On May 21st, 2025, and June 4th, 2025, notice of the hearing was published in the record. On May 20th, 2025, persons owning property within the set distance and other agencies were notified of the hearing by mail. On May 20th, 2025, notice was posted on the property. Recommended conclusions. After review of the application and file in this case, the planning and zoning staff recommends the commission consider the following general standards applicable to the special uses in conclusion. If any of these conclusions are deemed to be findings of fact, they are incorporated into the findings of fact section. A, will in fact constitute a special use as established in the zoning ordinance for the zone involved, in that it is not already defined as a permitted use in the zoning ordinance. Yes, 541G, lots as specified under Section B of this section, larger than one acre but smaller than 20 acres. B, will be harmonious with and in accordance with the general objectives or with any specific objectives of the comprehensive plan and/or the zoning ordinance. 541C, original parcels that have been in existence prior to April 9th, 1979, and have not been subsequently divided since that date, may be eligible for up to three one-acre splits depending on the size of the original parcel and the number of previous divisions of the parcel. Such one-acre divisions shall be allowed on a formula of one division per five acres of the total area of the original parcel, not to exceed three divisions of the original parcel, creating no more than four lots. If the original parcel has been divided under this allowance after April 9th, 1979, and prior to the date of this title into more than one parcel, regardless of the size, such division already shall take into account as part of the maximum of three splits allowed into that original parcel per five acres of total area. The size of the one-acre split may be increased only through the special use process. It is recommended where possible that splits be clustered and placed upon land considered marginal for agricultural use. There is an original parcel dwelling right available to the subject property. However, the splits were not done in accordance with 541C and therefore require a special use permit to allow a lot size larger than one acre but less than 20 acres. And C, will be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity, and that such use will not change the essential character of the same area. The split as proposed will not be a significant change in the land use in the area. This should be determined at the public hearing. D, will not be hazardous or disturbing to existing or future neighboring uses. Split as proposed will not be a significant change in the land use in the area. There is rural residential use in the area. This should be determined at the public hearing. E, will be served adequately by essential public facilities and services such as highway, streets, police, and fire protection, drainage structures, refuse disposal, water, and sewer, and schools, or the persons or agencies responsible for the establishment of the proposed use shall be able to provide adequately any such service. The property is served by the Cambridge Fire District, Cambridge School District, Washington County Sheriff, and the Washington County Road and Bridge. This should be determined at the public hearing. F, will not create excessive additional requirements at public costs for public facilities and services, and will not be detrimental to economic welfare of the community. The residence will be served by an individual well and septic system that will be permitted through the Idaho Department of Water Resources and Southwest District Health. This should be determined at the public hearing. G, will not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, equipment, or conditions of operation that will be detrimental to any person's property or the general welfare by reason of excessive production of traffic, noise, smoke, fumes, glare, or odors. There will not be significant change in the land used in the area. It will be a single-family dwelling with the remainder of the land retaining agricultural value. This should be determined at the public hearing. H, will have vehicular approaches to the property that shall be so designed as to not create an interference with traffic on surrounding public thoroughfares. The property has access off of Highway 71. This should be determined at the public hearing. I, will not result in the destruction, loss, or damage of a natural scenic or historic feature of major importance. No, the proposed use will not. This should be determined at the public hearing. Recommended order. If the commission recommends denying the request and staff recommends that the following be included as a rationale and what actions the applicant might take, if any, to gain approval upon reapplication, no recommendation. If the commission recommends approving the request and staff recommends that it will be the following conditions, that the general standards applicable to special uses in 592 of Washington County Code have been met.
Thank you. Could we have the city staff report, please?
I suppose. I get to stand up here. Corey Morgan, Public Works Superintendent for the City of Cambridge. This is the staff report for special use permit for Robert and Deanna McConnell. Description: Application has been submitted to Washington County for a special use permit for the approval of building a single-family dwelling on land in the area of city impact. See Washington County Code below. So agricultural zone, 541A1. Lot area in Zone A1, no dwelling shall be sold, transferred, or built with less than 20 acres of lot area, except as provided in subsection C of this section. No residential subdivisions shall be allowed in A1 zone. Only one single-family residence allowed per approved lot. Exceptions: Original parcels that have been in existence prior to April 9th, 1979, have not been subsequently divided since that date, may be eligible for up to three one-acre splits depending upon the size of the original parcel and the number of previous divisions of the parcel. Such one-acre divisions shall be allowed on a formula of one division per five acres of the total area of the original parcel, not to exceed three divisions of the original parcel, creating no more than four splits, four lots. If the original parcel has been divided under this allowance after April 9th, 1979, and prior to the date of this title into more than one parcel, regardless of size, such divisions already taken shall count as part of the maximum of three splits allowed on that original parcel per five acres of total area. The size of the one-acre split may be increased only through the special use process. It is recommended where possible that splits be clustered and placed upon land considered marginal for agricultural use. I know it's repetitive. Location: The subject property is located at 2925 Highway 71, Cambridge, Idaho, 83610. Approximately a quarter of a mile from the Cambridge City limits. The property is adjacent to Highway 71 and is surrounded by agricultural, residential, and some commercial uses. The property is not located in a FEMA-mapped flood zone. Existing use and structures: The property is currently an empty 10.1 acre parcel with no improvements except for a well and power. Zoning: City future land use map shows parcel is zoned agricultural. See Cambridge City Code below, 1041A, agricultural zones. A, purpose: An agricultural purpose of agricultural land is defined as land with an area of five acres or more. B, A1 agricultural zone. Definition: The A1 zone shall include all tracts of land which are being used for agricultural purposes and are not devoted to uses included within classifications A2, R, C1, C2, D, and shall be designated as A1 zones. Lot area restrictions: In Zone A1, no dwelling, the construction of which has begun after May 8th, 1995, shall be sold, transferred, or built with less than five acres of lot area. In Zone A1, no dwelling shall be erected or building altered to serve as a family residence on less than five acres of lot area. Permitted uses: The following uses and no others shall be deemed Class A1 uses and shall be permitted in all A1 zones. Airports by special permit of the City Council. CAFOs by special permit of the City Council. The following restrictions will apply to CAFOs. Any new CAFO or major expansions, 50% or more of existing CAFO, shall be by conditional use permit. No CAFO may be constructed within 1,000 feet of the adjoining property lines. Cemeteries by conditional use permit. Cultivation, storage, and sale of crops, vegetables, fruits, plants, flowers, and nursery stock produced on the premises. Fairgrounds by conditional use permit. Farm and ranch houses, buildings. Livestock and poultry raising, feeding, and sale, but not including commercial feedlots, kennels, and veterinary or animal hospitals. Radio and television transmitting stations by conditional use permit. Riding stables by conditional use permit. C, A2 agricultural transitional zone. Definition: The A2 zone shall be an area that is presently used for agricultural purposes, but due to its size and environmental conditions, it would be better suited for development. For example, non-irrigatable plateau in an existing farm or a rock outcropping that makes it uneconomical to farm. This land use will be evaluated on a case-by-case basis by the City Council. Permitted uses: The following uses and no others shall be deemed Class A2 uses and shall be permitted in all A2 zones. All uses permitted in A1 agricultural zone and such other uses or development as determined on a case-by-case basis by the City Council. Background: The subject property is in Washington County but is within the area of city impact for Cambridge. Washington County Planning and Zoning supplies the City of Cambridge with information that the property does have a dwelling right attached to it, but the previous splits were not done in accordance with County Code 541C. See Washington County Code 541C. As a result of this, the subject property is in between the counties conforming lot sizes, therefore requiring a special use permit. Cambridge Comprehensive Plan. The City of Cambridge Comprehensive Plan. Cambridge Comprehensive Plan, the City of Cambridge Comprehensive Plan is the primary document which guides land use within the City of Cambridge and its area of impact, as well as guide, a guide to the city's vision for the future. The Comprehensive Plan is intended to be a set of positive, rather than restrictive, statements concerning what the City of Cambridge, Cambridge wishes to be and to accomplish. The following excerpts from the city's Comprehensive Plan may be relevant for consideration of the request. Chapter 5, Land Use. 5.1 Introduction, the land use surrounding Cambridge, Cambridge is primarily agricultural and ranching. Land use designations serve as a planning tool that assists the City of Cambridge in sustaining reasonable growth and development. 5.2 Current Land Use Patterns, agriculture, the agriculture category provides for the production of crops, for apries and livestock, excluding CAFOs, and for the location of necessary processing facilities, accessory units, and compatible recreation uses. Development projects proposed in these areas should incorporate strategies for preserving agricultural use. 5.5 Area of City Impact, the area of city impact is the area that the city expects to grow within the next five years based upon the new state law for the area of city impact. See Idaho Statute 67-6526. Areas of impact, the City of Cambridge should have an agreement in place with Washington County for land use decisions in predefined impact areas surrounding the city. The boundaries of the area of city impact should be contingent upon negotiations with Washington County and should be developed in a timely fashion. In some cases, as requested by a landowner, the city may annex outside its area of city impact. Growth issues affect both the city and county. Effective growth management will require a coordinated effort involving the city and county land use regulations. Some of the more specific growth-related issues include provisions applicable to the areas of impact. A, in defining an, an initial area of impact or in modifying or confirming an existing area of impact, the criteria set forth in this subsection shall be considered. I, anticipated commercial and residential growth, geographic factors, transportation, infrastructure, and systems, including connectivity, areas where municipal or public sewer and water are expected to be provided within five years, and other public service district boundaries. Conclusion Analysis, a recommendation to Washington County for approval of the special use permit should be based on the following criteria, that the special use conforms to applicable regulations and standards. A, if approved, the special use will conform to applicable regulations and standards by the Washington County zoning ordinance. B, if... That's not right. If approved, the special use will not conform to the City of Cambridge's current future land use zoning designation of agriculture A1. Two, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or welfare. At this time, staff cannot identify any factors that would cause the proposed special use to be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare. That the uses, values, and enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted shall be in no foreseeable manner substantially impaired or diminished by establishment of the special use. Again, staff cannot foresee any factors that would diminish or impair the uses, values, and enjoyment in the neighborhood. Based on the applicant's narrative, they are wanting to build a single-family dwelling. That the establishment of the proposed special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the zone. Staff cannot foresee any conditions of the proposed special use that would impede any developments or improvements of the surrounding property. That the special use does not adversely impact service delivery on the postal service, school district, fire protection district, ambulance district, or sheriff's department. There are no foreseeable factors that would demonstrate that the proposed special use would have an adverse impact on any of the above-named local government services that would require any sort of mitigation. Recommendation, staff recommends approving the special use permit to allow the building of a single-family dwelling as proposed by the applicant, subject to the following conditions, that the general standards applicable to special uses in 5-2-9 of Washington County Code have been met. And that's it?
Thank you. No person shall be permitted to speak before the Cambridge City Council at a public hearing until recognized by the mayor. All persons speaking shall come forward to the microphone. All persons shall state their name, pursuant to Idaho Code 67-6509. All testimony is recorded. Is there any written testimony at this point?
No written correspondence was received.
Okay. Okay, first we'll begin with testimonies for the project, and we'll begin with Justin McConnell.
Yes, my name is Justin, and yeah, I'm for it. Obviously, I'm his son, so that's one of the reasons, but yeah. That's all I have.
Okay. Okay, is there any comments that are neutral concerning this project? Hearing none? Are there any, any testimony against this project? Okay. I'll declare this hearing closed.